... council members said to go ahead and join us in a few minutes. As soon as they get here, they're just inside. So, welcome everyone to the Brisbane City Council meeting. We're having a special meeting. It's a study session, April 6, 2017. And this is regarding the Brisbane Baylands planning applications. And the specific topic tonight includes economics, development feasibility, municipal cost, revenue, and related policy issues. So, just wanted to remind people listening, or if other members of the public come, this study session is open to the public, but the primary purpose is for the council members to ask questions on the agenda topic. And public comment is encouraged at the 7:30 hearing. So, who would like to start us off? And I think since the topics are all pretty much, you know, economics-related, we'll just take all the questions.
I have a... Oh, go ahead. Did you say that?
Go ahead. No, I'm not...
I have a couple smaller questions, but I just had one really big question that I wanted to get answered first. I was anticipating that in the report, we would see an outline of what... an analysis of what the Planning Commission had proposed. So, because we're heavily evaluating, you know, their suggestions, and so I know that there was all of the different plans, but then I thought it would be helpful because if we're going to drill kind of deeper into the Planning Commission's suggestions, there are different square footage of commercial that they've suggested. So, I think it might be helpful if we could see how that plan measures out in terms of numbers. You know what I'm saying?
Well, maybe Tim can observe a qualitative discussion. We didn't have Kaiser Marsden do another fiscal impact study-
Right.
-of the Planning Commission version, so there's not going to be a set of numbers like there was with the four primary alternatives in the...
Is there any way to get, I mean, to get that for deliberations? I just think that it's... It's my... I was in Asia, so I recently just read my packet, so if I would have been able to read it further in advance, then this would have been a comment that I would have been able to bring like a week or so ago, and I apologize for that. But I just think that that information might be really helpful for us to get a better sense of the feasibility of that particular... Their suggestions.
Yeah, I could certainly talk to the consultants and what the timing would be of running another... Good afternoon, or evening, I guess now.
Hi.
I'm Tim Kelly. This is Debbie Kern. We're both from Kaiser Marsden Associates in San Francisco. So, just to give you some organizationally how we're set up, Debbie is primarily responsible for doing the fiscal impact analysis-
Okay.
... which is a fairly big analysis. And I was involved in doing the development economics, which I think your question was towards the development economics. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So, I mean, at a high level, let me just give you an overview of that, which was, as John mentioned, it was a qualitative analysis in a sense, but we did use some of UPC's technical studies numbers to try to use them for illustrations. Where I'm going with this is that there are a lot of costs to develop the site that are independent of land uses.
Right.
Okay? And those costs are significant. I mean, you see the number in there of a billion dollars. But even if the first phase was only $100 million, that is best we under... So, let me back up. The technical analysis was provided by UPC. There's a lot of... And those costs include remediation, landfill closure, grading, new roads, all that. So, those come from very technical reports that are done by people that do that. And we just basically accepted those numbers, because frankly, we didn't have a better set of numbers to use. So, but as we understand, most of those numbers, they're somewhat independent of the land uses. In other words, you got to close the landfill regardless of the plan. You have remediation regardless of the plan. You have grading regardless of the land use plan. So, in a lot of ways, even if we were to look at numbers on a different program, so it'll come back to the same... We use this basic test, because there's lots of variables you could use. And so, to not get overly complicated, we try to take it down to a really basic variable, which was the cost to what we call open up the site has to be in balance with the revenues that you could get. And as we understand those technical studies, it's very expensive to open up the site. I mean, if you were to do the whole thing, it's a billion dollars, which obviously is not going to happen right at one time. But even if it was like 10% of that, it's $100 million. And again, that's independent of the land uses. But because the numbers are so big, that the primary land uses that can support those types of costs, because you have to... I mean, as the money... As it's funded, it's funded upfront. In other words, you have to pay... You got to close the landfill first. You got to do the remediation first. You have to do the grading first before you can get the development to come in behind it, or whatever, the open space, whatever. So, all these numbers have to occur first. So, those are big numbers to occur upfront. And because of the numbers that are big, what we are telling city staff, advising city staff, that there's really two primary land uses that can support those big numbers. It's not that they can't have complementary land uses that go with them. Okay? But you can't just have a five-acre site and spend $100 million doing, you know, closures and things like that. I mean, you need to have a bigger site. And so, as we see the world right now, there's sort of two land uses as the primary land uses. One is campus office, and the other one is, as you know, residential. And that's not to say that the campus office or the residential couldn't have a retail component, could have a hotel, could have other components. But the lead component would have to be one of those two land uses. And we think, you know, it's a challenge right now to still make the numbers work, but as we all know, the market keeps getting stronger, keeps getting better. This is a dynamic analysis. You know, the answer today is more positive than a year ago, and hopefully, the answer a year from now is more positive than today, you know? So, you can't get necessarily caught up totally in the numbers being it doesn't... You know, how are you going to possibly pay for all this? Because, you know, the locational qualities of the site on 101, having Caltrain, you know all this, you know? Regional identity. And the fact that it's, you know, one of the few sites, if not the only site on the peninsula, I mean, between Mission Bay and the peninsula, I mean, there's... This is the site, right? It's big, 300 net acres to build on. I realize it's 600 acres overall. So, it is, you know, in that world, it's a very attractive site. The issue is what you see when you drive by it. I mean, how do you open it up? All the closure issues, the grading issues, all that kind of thing. So, based upon the information we were given by the technical people, and as we understand it, it isn't a kind of project where you could just carve off five acres and do something, and five acres and do something. And you can't have a series like 20 five-acre projects. It just... The costs are too big to do that. They need to have a bigger project. So, to get back to your question about the alternative land uses, we would still come back probably with the same answer. It's either the primary land use has to be a campus office right now, or residential, or some combination. And again, I'm being repetitive, but you can't have other land uses with the primary land uses, so...
I guess more of what I was... I think more of what I was interested in was the fiscal impacts. I'm just looking at the table that you have, Table 1, where it kind of...
Can I just add something?
Well, it's from the big book, page... This is page 28, but it's not. It's really page 975, I believe.
Oh.
And I think it might be in the staff report also. I just have this one in front of me.
Yeah, they sort of... The two pages are... Some are numbered one way in our staff report, and they're numbered another way in the Planning Commission book.
This one?
And I... In the future, I'd sort of like to see both of those numbers. I'd like to see the photocopies for the staff report come from the big book, so that we have a correlation for the numbers, because that's what I've been reading. And then, I have to try to go and change the numbers on them. So, as a point to that, I would like to see that, but...
So, I think it's 975. And yeah, it might be somewhere in this. It's probably... I think it's in the staff report, too. So, it kind of outlines the different, you know, scenarios. And then, on a couple pages later, which would be 978, it talks about net revenue slash expense. And I think that's really important for us to understand with regards to what the Planning Commission is suggesting, because if you look at Scenario 1 and 1A, the difference in the net revenue and expense from 2 and 2A is really a big difference. Sorry, I'll wait for you to get there.
Okay. Well, it's just that you're just looking at the net impacts of each of the scenarios, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. So, and how they were, you know, the pages surrounding that kind of breaks it down into different scenarios. And I just thought that that was really eye-opening for me to be able to compare the sets of numbers and the plans with each other-
Yeah.
... in a chart like that, in a table. So, I was just... When I was asking about... When I was asking about the numbers for the Planning Commission's recommendation, I'm realizing that it was specifically for fiscal impacts and not necessarily for actually financing the project.
I'll find my hand. Well, I guess, as John said, we did not reevaluate a new mix. And these, the scenarios that are here are the ones that are in the EIR, and they are conceptual in nature. It's, you know, it's there's... They focus on different land uses, whereas, you know, the developers' plans obviously have the residential component, and they have about 7 million square feet of non-residential. The community plans are less intense in development and don't have the residential component. They have, however, much more hotels. The fiscal analysis, this is a preliminary analysis in that it looks at the indicate... It should be viewed as an indicator of the impacts of these different scenarios. And the scenarios are conceptual. We don't have a phasing plan for each of these. We don't know... And the analysis assumes that each of these would be fully built out, so that you would have the 1,500 hotel rooms, the 2,000 hotel rooms. Those are a lot of hotel rooms. So, under... When you look at the impacts of the, for example, Scenario 2A with those 2,000 hotel rooms, that's... Those impacts reflect those, the built-out of that, the hotel component, which would likely take many, many, many years. And so, what we would like you to take away from the fiscal analysis is that it provides you an understanding, an indication of the impacts, and identifies issues, for example, how you may want to manage the fiscal impacts of the project in terms of maybe some kind of land uses you definitely want to have in there. Also, it looks at costs. For example, the road maintenance costs are an issue, or in part, maintenance. And it identifies, well, maybe if we're... We could come up with a way that we shift the cost of those out of the general fund to the property owners, then it would enhance the fiscal economics of the project. So, that's how we look at it. We're happy to look at another scenario. We haven't done that yet, though.
Yeah. I just would like to understand, like, where it falls in the mix. So, there's a pretty big difference between the net revenue from, like I said, Scenario 1 and 1A versus 2 and 2A.
Yeah.
And I think it would be important for us to have an understanding of where, what the... And I think it's important, you know, they made their recommendation, but ultimately, we have to make sure that what they're recommending is feasible. And I think that it's very important for us to do the legwork in the meantime now, as we're getting closer to making a decision, to really understand if what they've suggested is actually even something that's possible.
Well, the feasibility, there's two parts to that feasibility. And one is the fiscal feasibility, and that's the tax revenues and the expenses. So, and from my perspective, is that almost, I mean, any kind of project, whatever it is out there, you can manage the fiscal impacts and make sure that it's fiscally neutral or beneficial to the city. And you do that by, for example, before any phase is approved or can go forward, that a fiscal analysis would have to be done that demonstrates that it's fiscally beneficial. You can do it by, like I said, by managing the costs. And you'd say, well, we're going to require that the parks all be privately funded, the maintenance all be privately funded, that the streets all be privately funded, the maintenance, or a portion of them are actually privately owned. Those are very common tools that are used by all large, big developments that we work on. Mission Bay, at Bay Meadows in San Mateo, Treasure Island, I'm working on right now. We're developing this financing plan. And all of... A big portion of the annual costs of maintenance, which in this analysis, it's all funded by the city. It's all funded by the general fund. But it's a starting point. You have... You know then what the parameters, what the full bucket of costs are. And then, the next step is, okay, we know what all those costs are. Now, let's figure out who's going to pay for those costs and how that's going to be funded. And then, the other part is having a balanced plan with respect to land uses. So, that's on the fiscal side. But the other part, you could have a plan that says, you know, all we want are hotels. That's all we have in our land use plan, for example. That, from an economics perspective, from a land use development perspective, that's not financially feasible. As Tim was saying, if you just had hotels, you wouldn't be able to fund all the infrastructure costs that are... That need to be funded out there. So, you have to have a plan that's balanced on a fiscal basis, and it's also balanced on a development feasibility basis. So, it's financial feasibility. So, it's looking at the private revenues, the land values from sales or rent compared to the cost of developing the project. And that has to be in balance, too. Otherwise, you're never going to have a project that generates those fiscal benefits. So, it's both. It's both the private development economics and the fiscal. Both of those have to be feasible for whatever project you ultimately choose. And I would say that the fiscal side can be much more easily managed, because you can require it one way or another, that the city's not going to carry a burden for those, for the project. On the financial feasibility side, that's a bit trickier, because you don't control that. And it's the market forces, and you have to have a plan that is financially feasible to the developer. And that's... So, that's the balance that has to go on.
Okay. And then, I want to let my other council members ask questions. So, just my last one is a follow-up to something that was just said about primary land use. And it was something that was asked by Jamil in the Planning Commission minutes. And he had asked about solar farm use. And at that time, he had come up with a scenario, let's say that there is just a solar farm and a hotel to start. Could that be enough to, you know, get the project rolling, be Phase 1? And I think you had said no, just like you just said. You can't have just all hotels, right? And so, it seems like solar farm can't be one of the primary land uses, because it's not going to be able to help finance, so to speak, the rest of the project. Correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that that's...
You could do that, is you do a solar farm, and it doesn't trigger the closure of the landfill and every, you know, remediation and all that. I mean, it would have to somehow stand on its own. But if it has to fund those costs, the landfill, I mean, the solar farm's not going to do that.
Yeah. It has to generate enough revenue to be feasible for them to put that money in.
It can be a complimentary land use.
Like a hotel?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So, as a follow-up to that, if I may, I requested earlier today from staff, a copy of the data that the consultants used that was provided by UPC for that $1.1 billion. And I was lucky enough to get it. And Ingrid has a copy for all of us. And it gives the horizontal cost estimate for each of the four land use studies. It is still very vague. It is very open to interpretation. And actually, none of them add up to $1.1 billion. So, I'm not quite sure where that $1.1 billion figure came in. Because part of the reason I had requested this was with the UPC questionnaire that's gone out, was asking, would citizens be willing to not fund closure or cleanup in order to get the kind of project that they wanted? Is basically my interpretation of the questionnaire that was sent out to all the residents, where the communities' priorities laid. And so, I think this is really good, basic information on some of the costs for just closing the landfill, just doing some of the grading. And I think that with a little bit more investigation into these costs, and as we look at them, because I wasn't able to really get into the details from these, or even really look at the feasibility versus the land mass that the Planning Commission was recommending, or the amount of land usage, I think that it will give a starting point on us making a determination of what would need to be done if we decided to go with the Planning Commission recommendation and lesser land uses. So, I think that's something for later, when we can really look at them and digest them. But I think a lot of the information is here with the... And I understand they're not vetted particularly, but at least they are quantified in some aspects. And I think some of those will answer Councilmember Davis's questions, as far as what uses may support what development. And so, that's something I think is a really good document to have here.
Terry, do you want to ask any questions?
I've got quite, you know, a lot of questions as we go through the staff report. One question I had on page 980 was in the population, Table 3A.
Okay.
What the symbol HH means?
It means household.
Households, not people.
It's 2.3 people per household. I'm sorry, you know, it's... The average household size is 2.23. And that's per the census.
Okay. The anticipated occupancy of units.
Yeah. And again, and I think this is a good... It just shows, you know, how preliminary. We don't have data on really the types of these units or any... It's just, it's very conceptual, and so, we've used the census data for the city.
Okay. And then, on page 979, the... I'm assuming it's on footnote 1?
I'm sorry. Can you tell me what the table number on the top or the page?
Table 2.
Table 2? Okay. Okay.
And in footnote 1, it's... I assume this is from the developers' information densities of 45 to 95 units per acre?
Yes. Yes. And it's from... Well, it's from the EIR and UPC. Yeah.
Okay. And does that...
Well, that's... I mean, all of this data is from the draft EIR that was dated June 2013.
So, using what UPC, the proponent has contributed?
What was analyzed in the EIR.
Okay. And then, when you did the analysis of upon build-out-
Yeah.
-you're doing it all in $2,011?
Uh, yes.
And at what year did you anticipate build-out on all scenarios?
We did not do... This is with... This is conceptual. There is no build-out year. It's as if, the analysis is if it was built out today, using current tax revenues and expenditure costs today with the full build-out project in each one of these scenarios. So, there isn't any market analysis that's been done that says this concept will build out in this in many years, or there's market support for this many hotels, but not for this many hotels, or this amount, or the, you know, the entertainment complex under one of the variants. So, there isn't... This is purely a fiscal analysis under the assumption that each one of these scenarios is supported by the marketplace and will reach full build-out. And it's the analysis upon build-out. So, that's why... It's another reason it's conceptual, because there isn't any evaluation of the market for any of the... I mean, these are huge projects, and they'll take many, many years to build out.
We've heard everything from 20 years to 40 years, and, you know, a newspaper article today that was forwarded to us, you know, commented on the fact that it could take 20, 30, or more years to build out. And so, a lot of the analytical data that we're looking at is how do we get through the first 5, 10, 15, 20, 30 years, 40 years to build out, and what horizontal costs we need to do or needs to be done, because we don't need to do anything. What the developer needs to do-
Correct.
... to be able to start at ground zero.
And I think that that's correct. And that's why, when you get to a point where you're talking about each phase, so it's like, how does this first phase work? And then, you have to look at, well, you know, UPC has to figure out how they're going to make it pencil from a financial feasibility perspective. And then, the city does need to figure out with UPC how it works from a fiscal perspective. And that's where you develop this financing plan for that first phase. And you say, okay, this first phase has this many roads, it has this many acres of parks, it has this many, you know, square footage of industrial or office or whatever it has. And then, you evaluate that first phase, and you prepare this roadmap for making sure that the project generates a fiscal benefit to the city, and everybody will feel comfortable with that first phase. But this is just... This first fiscal, it does, you know, it provides you with a... It identifies the issues, like the roads, well, how much it costs to maintain the roads, how much it costs to maintain the parks. And so, that's something that then can be used to inform the structure of this financing plan for municipal services.
Let me just... Just to reemphasize what Debbie's saying, I mean, if there was a development agreement before they would actually build some particular phase, because this is so conceptual, they would have to come back with a precise plan. And it would have to go through the same vetting we're sort of doing now, to make sure it meets the city's needs and is fiscally positive, and doesn't put a burden on the general fund. And that would be a test that would have to be done at that point in time. So, we're trying to provide you a framework of how to look at it. We're not telling... This is not approving the first phase or whatever, because there is no first phase to approve. And the point is, this is trying to provide you a framework that would be in a contractual agreement that they would have to do when they come for, with the first phase. That would be a condition of that project. That would be a condition of that project.
Okay. So one question I have for our finance director, currently on a public finance bond or with the city's financing, do you know what type of rate we're expecting at, for a current city bond, regardless of project? Is it a 1%, 2%, 3%, 4%?
We haven't been in the market recently, but probably somewhere in the 4% range.
Okay.
For a municipal tax-free bond.
Okay. That was our, my first guess when I was doing some penciling out of things was the 4% was what I recalled that we had been doing. And then on the $9 million refinance, or successor agency, prior redevelopment agency debt on that property, is that debt that the city had? Tax that we'd taken from that property to do other projects in town? Or is that projects that were done on those properties?
The $9 million of redevelopment debt was mostly from the housing, that we have to repay housing. There's the $2 million that has to be repaid to the Marina Fund. There's another 1.2 that's going to be repaid to the general fund, while the general fund covered administrative costs for the redevelopment agency. But you're talking about, like, what current debt we have on the redevelopment, the successor agency has today that is owed to the city, right?
The successor agency for that portion?
Well, there's no really that portion anymore. The successor agency is all of one.
Took it all over.
Right. So that portion didn't have $9 million in and of itself at that time. That portion only had some debt due to needing to make the housing, not being able to make a housing payment. And $4 million, if you recall, $4 million of former housing fund debt was disallowed by DOF, which is going to be, it has to be written off of our books, written off our books in the 15, 16 fiscal year. Because remember, that was when the DOF told us that we missed the date when we were supposed to pass a resolution. So therefore, that debt was disallowed, and this is back in the 80s.
So, but it is correct that tax increment revenue that comes off of that portion will be needed to repay approximately $9 million? Or is that going to go down by the $4 million?
It's going to go down by the $4 million. So all of, all taxes increment from within the successor agency, which is both out on Sierra Point and the Baylands area, needs to go through the waterfall. So first off, we have to pay off the Marina bonds. And then any other, then after that, we get to repay ourselves. But we only get 50% of that tax increment, because the other 50% of that taxing, any new tax increment goes through and reimburses and pays to the underlying taxing entities. So until all the debt is paid off through the former successor agency, you still have that formula that has to take place. I'm not sure if I'm quite answering the question you're trying to get to.
Bottom line is, the money that is generated out of the former RDAs is going right now to pay off debt obligations.
Not all of the tax increment.
Some of the taxing entities, right, like the school district.
Right. So a portion is. So what's going towards paying off the, you know, and it would be better if I could, you know, if I pulled up my ROPS and I can work through the numbers for you. But the portion that goes to the successor agency is the portion that's needed to pay the Marina, first off. Marina bond, also the portion that we get for our administrative costs, which is about $50,000 a year. So those two come off the top to begin with. You then have whatever the pass-through agreements, and I think is about $100,000, in pass-through money to the underlying taxing districts. So anything in addition to that then goes into a formula where 50% can be used to pay off the city debt, and 50% goes to the underlying taxing entity. So what's going to happen is that's going to continue until the successor agency has paid off all of its debt. And as the debt to the redevelopment, to the city goes down over the years, that may mean more, you know, if you build out in the Baylands, and Baylands was very successful, and we had a lot of property tax money, and we were able to make the payments to the city quicker, more money would be going to the underlying taxing entities quicker. Does that?
Our cells and the school district.
Our cells, school district, county, county library.
Community college.
Community college.
All right.
So in the recology variant on the maps, and I'll have to say that in our packet, they were really difficult to read because of the shading and non-color, and I didn't pull them up on the computer. Is the analysis of the recology variant still viable? Or have we heard from recology if they are still looking at that? Or is that something we can't really discuss because it's not part of the EIR?
Probably more of a, just a question in terms of where they're at in the process. But they're, they're still very intended, intending to move forward with that, there's just the timing.
But wasn't it that it was a smaller project they were looking at moving forward with?
Um, I think they've changed.
Not what was set, what was sort of looked at in the DEIR?
I don't, I don't know that I could say that. I mean, I know they've changed some things, but I think that was captured in DEIR.
Their kind of project description that's going to be subject to its own EIR has not been ever formally finalized with the city. So I can't tell you if it'd be smaller than what was analyzed in the, certainly, if it was larger, it would be smaller, if anything. So the EIR will have, worst case.
That's what I, that's what I thought. I thought that the maps looked like it was a larger area than what I'd heard they were interested in. But I haven't seen anything formally, and so I wasn't sure, because the draft EIR has taken so long to come to fruition that I just wasn't sure if that was still current. I have a few more questions, but I'll let the rest of the council get some in before we go into other things.
All right. First of all, thank you for the report. It was very, very helpful in, you know, being able to get a good foundation for the economics of a project or of the site. You know, as you said tonight, and what you've written in here, you know, this is, this provides a starting point for which then you can branch off into looking at different economic, you know, situations. Also, you know, you mentioned in here that, you know, this is, there's a lot of moving parts, and what eventually could be decided in the future will totally recalibrate your economic analysis. So, you know, in evaluating, you know, what you've written here, I've kind of taken the same approach that I have with the other things that we've discussed in the EIR, whether it's, you know, trying, you know, when you're looking at emissions, you know, how do you create a zero net emissions development? You know, to me, I look at this, and, you know, I see a path forward where the city is, I don't know if immune is the, is the proper word, or if that's really feasible, but working towards where the city is not accountable for any of the costs or negative costs to the city as it's being operated today in regards to how the Baylands is developed. So it's, in a sense, you know, the Baylands, it's its own bubble, in that the city is not going to be responsible for whatever happens out at the Baylands, you know, in the planning of it, in the, you know, closing of the landfill, you know, the construction costs, you know, all the different phases. However, once development does occur, and there then, would then be the opportunities for the city to start to receive money in regards to sales tax or transit occupancy tax, whatever those land uses that are eventually are approved and then are built out, then the city receives those funds. But even with the building out of the Baylands, the city should always be in that position of not being responsible for many of the services, the infrastructure. And so I like how you've shown us examples of how we can do that. So I'm going to go through the staff report and then some of your, and then the two documents, actually, three documents that you have here. I know it's 6:48, and I do have a lot of questions, and I'll limit some of them here, and then I'll ask more after the community has a chance to speak.
We still have two more council members.
Okay, you know what? How about this? You know, I just made that statement. How about I'll let you guys ask questions, and then whatever doesn't get asked, then I'll follow up.
Okay.
Well, I'll be, I'll be real quick, because I don't have a whole lot of questions, other than, I know what you're getting at, Cliff, on it, because, just to reiterate that, even if nothing happened out there, there's no project approved whatsoever, UPC or Tontex is still 100% responsible for mitigating whatever. And that's how they bought it, 100%. They inherited the liability of the land, so we're not responsible for zilch. Now, in order for something to happen, of course, you know, you would have to go through the steps, I think, as you said, that, you know, if we get, you know, whatever development's approved, if there's housing variant, or commercial variant, or industrial variant, there's different levels of mitigation associated with those. I believe, and I'm looking at Lloyd getting the acknowledgement, and so, but if nothing's approved, they're still on the hook for that. But I don't know to what level, because, you know, we're hopefully trying to get something accomplished here. But when I go through the, through the figures here, I look at, you know, the different scenarios that were studied, and I absolutely laugh at the hotels. I laugh at it, you know? It's just, it's not going to happen. It'd be the absolute last thing that happened. And I use Sierra Point as the mirror reflection of the Baylands. Now, that project or that site was approved, I believe, in 1983, the whole site. And what year is this? 2017? It's 30, what, 35 years, 34 years? And it's still not built out. And then they have a hotel parcel out there that's owned by UPC that is basically developer-ready. What is it, 5, 10 acres, somewhat, something along those lines? And the only thing that's happened is we really have done, is a hotel feasibility study, which at the time, they said, probably not a good time, but come back every couple of years. Right now is the hottest time in the Bay Area for hotels. Nothing happens there, and that's kind of pretty much developer-ready. So that site, it's really ready long before anything here, and nothing's happening there. I wouldn't expect anything to happen in the Baylands, you know, even though we have developer agreements and stuff like that, it's just not a realistic look. So the financials, to me, it's just, you know, it makes me laugh. I mean, you know, I understand that that's what we put in, but I just, I just find it laughable. That's about the only thing I could say about it. I know that it's all predicated upon what we're going to approve from land use. And then from there, in the funnel, becomes more narrow, and then you can focus on exactly what's going to happen. And there's, you know, this is a multi-multi-step process, and we're kind of coming to the end of the major first stage of it. And then at that point, you know, then it'll keep getting boiled down, boiled down, till, you know, maybe have a, you know, I think, Tim, as you referred to, as a more, I forget what the term was, but more intrinsic plan that...
Precise plan.
Precise plan, that would then become what's going to be the driver, and how it's all going to play out, and what the nuts and bolts is going to be, how the developer agreement is going to lay out and everything like that. So from this aspect here, on, comes to the financial right now, it's just, well, nice to look at the numbers on, you know, what it could be, but even putting the hotels in there, it's just not real to me right now, because we're talking 30, 40 years out. We still have a place, Sierra Point, which is much smaller, and still not fully developed.
Yeah. Well, you're absolutely right. But you know what? You know, what they're tasked with is evaluating these plans.
Yeah.
And so then they take the information that's in these plans, and they come up with the numbers.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And, yeah, so you know that the numbers are, you know, very, very squishy. But it does kind of give you an idea of what the costs would be and what revenue would be generated today if these plans were put through. So, but, you know, one of the things that I think is very helpful is, you know, there's been a lot of concern from the public about, well, you know, is the city going to be on the hook? And, you know, you could, you could approve some of these plans, but then, you know, there are these costs in it, but they're, but what they've shown are these mechanisms that we could implement, you know, through a development agreement or certain taxing strategies, where, you know, the costs are being taken care of by either private, you know, by the private sector, or through the construction of the development. And I think that's really important. That is a message that definitely needs to be pulled and absorbed by the community. So.
Yeah, and I just want to, you know, let Tim and Lee know that I really enjoyed reading the report, you know, because I mean, I don't want to, you know, make it sound like, you know, this is all hocus-pocus. I know that, you know, based on the parameters that you're giving, that, you know, that it was very well done, you know, and I appreciate that, so.
So no questions?
Nope.
Do you want me to ask my questions before you?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I normally would go last, but I'll get a chance then. So, okay. So you had mentioned earlier about, you know, the tool, the financing tool of having the, some of the roads or the open space be privately owned and maintained. So what would be the pros or cons? Obviously, it would be a pro financially, but are there any, any challenges that the city might face if the roads would, and parks would be privately owned? You know, obviously, we wouldn't have the control over them, but, you know, have you looked at, I know that's...
Well, there's, there are different structures.
Okay.
One is that they would not be privately owned.
Okay.
They would just be maintained through a special tax that's placed on the property. So the property owner pays for the maintenance, but the, but the roads themselves and the parks would be publicly owned.
Okay. So it wouldn't be like Tunnel Avenue, which is partly privately owned?
Or you can, I mean, it can be a combination. Sometimes in, for example, in business parks, all the interior streets, or in residential neighborhoods, all the small intract streets are privately owned. I mean, that's one way. Some cities say, we don't want that, we want all publicly owned streets. That's fine, too. But you can have the maintenance of those, of that infrastructure be privately funded through these special taxes called the Community Facilities District.
Mm-hmm.
And that's a very common tool. And that's a very common tool that's used to fund ongoing maintenance for road, new roads that are put in, new parks. You can also do it, use it for other services like public safety services, they can fund a portion of that. So that is how new development is managing the, the cost of, of services.
Okay, great. You also mentioned in your report about the, the fact that if there is development, the existing operations would go away and that means we would lose some revenue, right? From the Brisbane soil processing and then something with some tax assessment on, on Tontex? There was some portion there. But my question was, you, you had suggested that one way to deal with that would be to move the interim operations to another location on the Baylands for the Brisbane soil processing. So is that something that we've, at this point, had discussions with UPC about? And do we have any potential location that we've identified?
There's been preliminary discussion about whether it's part of the development or whatever you, site preparation, that they might want to look at opening up the west side of the site for import of material that would be used for building that site up and filling what's required to get the west side site prepped for development.
Okay.
But there's no proposal on the table and no, it's before the city at this point.
Okay. And the, you know, the different tables and analysis look at each of the different plans, but my question is with, you know, with the residential component, component, there's over 4,000 units, you know, identified in the proposal. We've received phone survey and also written survey from the applicant with different levels of residential development proposed, you know, 4,000, would that be acceptable? 2,000 and, and so on and so on. So do, have you done any analysis on different levels of residential development for economic feasibility, like not just the 4,400 units, but in, numbers in between that?
In, in the fiscal impact, the tax revenue analysis?
Yeah.
No, we have not. We've just done these four, these four.
Okay. I think that would be helpful if in the future we could have some, some study that looked at different levels of residential development and what would be the, the revenue impact because, you know, it's not really all or nothing, you know, the council's going to have to consider the proposal and, you know, maybe we'll find that there's a sweet spot, you know, something in between that would be acceptable. And I think it would be good to have those figures for, you know, different levels. And then the financing tools, there's a, a section that talks about all those different tools we can use. So at what point in the process do we need to start, like seriously looking into that and start working on the financing tools?
Usually that would be when you are starting to negotiate the development agreement.
Okay.
And those would all be, it would be a very detailed plan that would be in the development agreement about how the services are going to be funded, what tools for which, for which uses and what things are going to be funded by the general fund, what, and you just go through a very detailed plan, prepare a detailed strategy for how you're funding and obligations. It enumerates obligations. This is the entity that's responsible for this. This is the entity responsible for that. And so there's no, there's no ambiguity and it's something then that the community can feel very comfortable with about that the project's going to pay for itself.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Cliff, your turn.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question to follow up on that? When the mayor asked about the soils processing, there's, are we talking about the, there's two operations going on, on the Baylands right now? One is a recycling and one is, I would call more of a storage type operation. And, and what is the breakdown of those two as far as the revenues received? Do we know that?
The vast majority is through the truck haul fees.
Right.
So-
But are they hauling it to the recycling facility or to the storage facility? Do we, and that might be something for later, but-
Yeah, I'm not sure that I completely understand your terms though. So, yeah, why don't we talk about that offline then?
I mean, what you're asking for is what's the difference between the two companies that are there?
Yes.
And you want to know what the revenues-
And the revenues-
That the two companies produce. Okay.
And then the other question I had that was sort of on the, on the financing side was the finding of completion. What is exactly a finding of completion on the successor agency?
We do have a finding of completion, which means that we don't have any more projects that we're going to be doing and that we can, at some point, file our final and our last and final ROPS. And that way we just get paid, the ROPS just get paid off automatically as we go through time.
Okay, so that's something that was mentioned in all the EFIDs and the difference-
We're there.
Financing scenarios. We've already done that.
Yes.
So that's a moot point.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
You know, I'm going to start off with the, the truck hauling question. So just, just real brief Stuart, so we, we get paid when, on the amount of weight that of the goods that are on a truck that comes in, it gets weighed and then?
We get paid by cubic yard.
Or yards, okay. So the amount that, that comes in and it's-
Forty-seven cents.
And it's sorted when it comes in, or I mean, it's assessed when it comes in and-
And when it goes out.
And when it goes out. Okay, that, that's all I wanted to, to know. Just from that, that's, those two facilities?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so go into your preliminary assessment of fiscal impacts. Okay, so on page 10, you know, it talks about the annual net fiscal surplus to the city of Brisbane ranging from 1.1 million to 8.7 million. What, and, and I know you, you're not going to know this, Debbie or Tim, but Stuart, what's the, kind of the, the net fiscal surplus for, for the city at its surpoint?
You've got me, you've got me stumped. Because I, you know, the, a lot of the work is done there through the Sierra Point Lighting and Landscaping District, so that's not a cost to the city. We haven't really broken down the cost of police and fire specifically there. There are no residents, so there's no cost to recreation. On the revenue side, we get 2.7 million from the hotels. I haven't specifically looked at to see what kind of sales tax we get from there. I could do that. And then property tax, most of it is, goes into the Redevelopment Agency, so there's minimal property tax that we get from there, but I can probably do an analysis on sales tax and then business licenses.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
And the marina part of it.
Well, right, but the marina is self-funding. We get, the only thing the city picks up from that is the franchise fee of 10% of the, uh, birth, birth rentals. Thank you, Clay. Which is about $100,000, $140,000.
And Stuart, you know, you, you mentioned the Sierra Point Lighting and Landscape District.
Yes.
That's, that's one of those vehicles that the city has used to have part of the services taken care of through the, the property owners.
Correct.
Okay. So we already, we already do that?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And Debbie, you talked about that, that in regards to new development, creating these districts and having these other types of privately funded mechanisms. That's this kind of standard course for, for new development these days?
For these large projects.
For these large projects, absolutely. Okay. And, you know, in, in the little box down below talking about, let's see, you know, the hotels, in, in the, the community proposed plan, we just decided we wanted more hotels. Right, so we just said, yeah, you know, we love hotels because they make us money. We're going to put it in there and, and that, and then that generated the higher number and UPC said, you know, we don't think we want that many hotels and that's why we got a lower number for the most part.
Well, yeah, the hotels generate a lot of net surplus just by definition, but again, it doesn't assess whether or not this is actually realistic and how long of a time it would take to actually develop this many hotels, that the market would support that.
Okay.
Or that it's financially feasible from a private development perspective. It doesn't address, these plans are as if they're all feasible to the private sector developer and they're all supported by the marketplace. There's demand for everything, so that's, those are big assumptions when you're looking at these fiscal impact analysis.
Big assumptions, yes. You know, in the DSP plan, you know, a lot of the, the revenue for the city is generated through property tax, but we have the RDA, former RDA. And so I, I guess we wouldn't really be seeing that, those revenues for a while.
Well, it, the, um, these are, these revenues are upon build-out, so it's annual revenues upon build-out. And so the RDA will, obligations will have been paid off long before this project reaches build-out. And then the other thing is while you may have $9 million of debt, the redevelopment agency has, a portion of that debt is funded by the past, the taxing agencies, you know, the portion of the increment that the redevelopment agency or the successor agency collects from these other taxing entities. The city's share is only, is like 18%. So it's really 18% of the $9 million is the city's portion that the city is, of its revenues that are being diverted to pay that debt. So it's not, you know, the $9 million is the successor agency's debt, but that's paid in effect by the portion of the tax revenues to all the taxing agencies, not just the city.
Okay. And then, so on page 12 and, and item B in this, embedded in that paragraph, you know, says non-residential uses typically generate, non-residential uses typically generate fiscal surpluses and, you know, and that the residential ones are, you know, do not. But in, in what you've shown here, I mean, if, if you could have residential development that isn't a drain on the city's services if you use different private funding mechanisms to support those.
That's absolutely true and it's also driven by the price points of the homes. And as you get more expensive homes and the way homes have gone, you know, prices have escalated, that that increases the property tax revenues and it makes residential much more fiscally positive. And so the combination of those two things, I mean, residential developments are approved all the time and they are approved with, with the fiscal analysis indicates that they're positive. And it's through managing the costs and then typically having higher price points on the homes.
Okay. And then, you know, one of the, one of the popular new style of, of housing is workforce housing. So, you know, you know, a lot of companies are thinking of, okay, yeah, you know, I want to do this development, I want to provide some workforce housing and they, they, you know, supplement the cost of, of housing. I guess then that, that particular company could also supplement some of the services as well that would be associated with that workforce housing.
Well, the, the private property owner would be paying a portion. If it's rental housing, then the owner of the rental project would be paying a portion for the maintenance costs. They're pro-rata share.
Got it, okay. And you talked about doing certain things like, yeah, doing some of these upfront type taxes to offset some of the losses from the current uses. That money that, that's, you know, like, well, the uses that are coming out in the Baylands go into the general fund. So if you have a tax, you know, like a construction tax or things like that, that money can go into the general fund?
Yes, in this analysis, it looks at the ongoing recurring impacts upon operations. So it doesn't look at the construction tax revenues that will be generated. And a project this size would generate tremendous amount of use tax revenue, which is when you purchase all of the materials for construction. And if you, again, that's something that needs to be managed in the development agreement to make sure that the city is positioned to capture that use tax revenue, that Brisbane's identified as the point of sale for, for the subcontractors when they bring materials on-site, that, that the use taxes go to, to Brisbane. And that'll be something that will be important in the development agreement. But it could be, it's a lot of money and so, and it's just not reflected in here.
Yeah.
And the other thing is that some communities also do adopt, it's not just use taxes, but they adopt additional taxes like construction tax. Cupertino has a very-
Yes.
-construction tax. Another thing are there can be ongoing taxes that are targeted for specific uses like a, an admissions tax, which is another source of revenue for, if you have a variant that has an arena or some kind of, you know, component, entertainment component. And if you have an admissions tax, that can bring in a lot of revenue too. So, you know, this is just using your existing tax base, but those are other tools that cities have used to really change the complexion of the fiscal impacts of, of new development.
Sure. Yeah, you know, you know, nobody likes paying taxes.
No.
But, you know, people and, and companies are more accepting of paying taxes if they know the tax goes to a specific thing or, or things that, that benefit them, that it's okay, it's not going into some hole, you know? So if you had some kind of taxing entity that, that worked towards providing, you know, some, some public transportation options, like a free shuttle or funding a bicycle program, you know, things like that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You know, and it's mentioned throughout your documents here, but on, you know, on page 16, in the second paragraph under number one, you know, and you mentioned this, you know, earlier that you're assuming that 100% of the streets, open space and parks will be publicly owned and maintained by the city. Would it be difficult to come up with some numbers that showed, well, okay, if you kind of maxed out or aggressively pursued some of these private responsible costs for these services so that then the numbers, you know, now, you know, these negative numbers are not so negative anymore? The, the, you know, the city has the, the power to implement these types of strategies and thus I think would paint a, a different picture for folks and also for the council, you know, to, to understand, okay, yeah, we can do these things here and now the city will generate more money for, you know, from this development. The city will not be responsible for these costs.
Cliff, if I may, I, I know that for, for this, they assumed that the city would be 100%, but, you know, there's, there wasn't a differentiation between open space and open areas because the open areas, which are basically open space, but they are funded by private companies. And, and that's in the general plan and reason why that was differentiated. So, I mean, I think for this, it looked at 100% is what the assumption was, but, you know.
Yeah, yeah, no, you're, you're right. But, you know, you know, I, I think when the general plan was written in 1994, I don't know if they were really thinking about, you know, these types of other, you know, private funding schemes. And so, I mean, I, I look at open space and open area, you know, potentially being funded by, and, you know, and, but, you know, with the open space, that, I know you talked about Debbie, that, about privately funding these things, the open- Debbie, that, about privately funding these things, the open space area, you know, we've talked about not having the city own that land, being able to, to use it, just because of the liability issues. Okay.
I think we're just about out of time.
Oh, yeah.
Save your questions for...
Yeah, no, I could definitely do that.
Okay, all right, so we are adjourned until 7:30. Thank you.
All right, thanks.